A call to order, could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're all present except for Bill Boyd, who I have not heard from, so I'm assuming he's on his way. He's probably been delayed.
It's in the fog.
Yes. Okay, announcements. The town hall offices will be closed on Monday, January 16th, for the observation of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Community development staff, the planning board, and the town council mourn the loss of Planning Board alternate member Jeff Sabring, who passed away on Friday, December 30th. Jeff was a valuable member of the board since April 2015 and had previously served as part of the Master Plan Steering Committee. We would like to extend our condolences to Jeff's family and friends. He will be missed. Can we just have a moment of silence, please, for Jeff? Thank you very much. I just want to note that Bill Boyd has arrived.
Why did you qualify that?
I'm sorry?
Why did you qualify that? Moment of silence.
She's coming in.
Did you wonder what was going on, Bill? Timing is everything, as they say. The town council is scheduled to meet on the following dates. Thursday, January 19th at 6:00 p.m., here in the Matthew Thornton Room, a budget meeting. Monday, January 23rd at 6:00 p.m., again, here, another budget meeting. A regular council meeting on Thursday, January 26th at 7:00 p.m., here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And Monday, January 30th, 6:00 p.m., a budget meeting if necessary. So the closer we get, the more we'll be able to determine if we need it or not. Eileen, please go right in.
One of the things that really needs to be done and given, I think, proper amount of time and scrutiny are the design alternatives for the DPW garage. So for, is it Monday, the, I can't remember what day it is, but Monday?
Monday, the 23rd.
Monday, the 23rd. The issuance of bonds and the fire department are on there. And the fire department, I think, would, with the proposal of four new firefighters, will probably take a decent amount of time, but so also will the highway garage. When you look at the, they'll actually have the engineer and architect come in and show you the different designs, the different design alternatives. They're not wholly new in terms of sizes and, you know, configurations and that kind of thing. They've just made, they're a little bit different and a little bit less expensive. So, you know, they already used all the things that we had, the dimensions of the bays and the dimensions of the various offices and that kind of thing, that has already been done by another engineer or architect. So it might be a good idea to schedule that for a different night, and I'm not sure, really, you know, it's up to you, whatever you want to do.
Thoughts? Bill?
I think it should be a dedicated night.
Yeah, I agree. A separate dedicated night. So do you want to do, we do have Monday, we're not here, right?
Right, the 16th. The 16th is Martin Luther King Day, right?
Oh, wow. No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
What about the 30th?
Might have to be, 30th?
That date would open to clarify the budget if we need to.
Right, yes.
That's when the council would start the deliberations of the budget if there, if we don't have a snow day. So if you want, you can have them in before to do it on the 30th and then start your deliberations afterwards.
It's a full council meeting.
The 26th is a regular council meeting.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a busy meeting.
If it's a busy meeting, then that's one thing.
Well, that's a good idea. We could take a look at the agenda.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That's a good idea.
It's light, light, tonight. It'd be pretty easy.
Yeah, it would have been tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do this? We'll look at the 26th. If it's a fairly light agenda, we'll plan it for that night.
Okay.
If not, then we'll talk about the 30th. And then we'll have the final. Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Eileen. Okay. Go right ahead. You continue.
The Merrimack Safeguard will be hosting the, something called the Community Connections, Putting the Pieces Together, on Thursday, January 19th, from 6 to 8:00 p.m. at the John O'Leary Adult Community Center. This community forum is designed to educate the community on how various organizations in the Merrimack area help promote a healthy environment for your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. PFOA update, there's nothing to report. Comments from the press and public? The rush coming up? Seeing none. There are no recognitions, resignations, or retirements, appointments. Annual review with Conservation Commission. Gage, come on up. You're not going to bring Tim up with you, huh? Oh, he's just in the background.
We're still in the process of Tim.
Submitted by Conservation Commission Chairman Gage Perry. Per town of Merrimack, Charter Section 6-6.
What?
The appointment part. I thought that's when the planning board guy was going to get signed in.
We have not heard any, I haven't heard anything yet.
It's not scheduled.
I'm sorry, we're having a sidebar conversation here.
Yeah, he was here. He was told he was close, but if it's not, I'll be another night.
Gage?
I need to step away because I don't have my eyeglasses on.
It's not on.
Don't be offended.
I don't have any paperwork either.
I need them for the whole meeting, so.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't want you to.
Oh, I see. Okay. There was a little bit of confusion about something being on the agenda.
And it would have been very important.
Hold on just a moment.
Oh, is it? I don't ever use this.
Sorry for the interruption. Per town of Merrimack, Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Conservation Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. Okay, that was a long interdiction. Interrupted?
We, we, can we put Bill to return?
We're all set. Thank you very much.
All right.
And you need to be able to make sure that your microphone's on. There we go.
And it's close to you.
Bring it closer to you a little bit. We're just getting high signs in the back. Okay.
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having a meeting with us tonight. This is, again, for a year review, our 2016 annual review for, or 2017 review year, 2017, but a review of the 2016 year, so. The, right now, our commission is, we've got some empty spaces on our commission. As you can see, we are not fully staffed. So again, anyone watching tonight, if they'd like to volunteer in public, we'd be glad to have you. We're lucky enough to have, Tim, our former chairman, did agree to stay on as an alternate member, so he's, you know, it's pretty helpful to have that, you know, for me at least, is transitioning to this role, so. You're aware of why we are in existence? It's RSA 36A, that the town is allowed to have a Conservation Commission. And our responsibility is to view the natural resources in town and make them available to the public and make sure that there's a balance between, you know, the use of conservation lands and the public recreation. We are responsible for reviewing all the permits and deeds, all the permits that go before New Hampshire DES, anything that's in the wellhead protection, or anything that's in the conservation areas, that we're responsible for reviewing their impact. No problem.
Is there a check there?
Yeah.
Cell phones now.
As we stand now, we currently, we currently maintain about 1,600 acres of property within town, and that's a combination of not just our own property, but this town-owned land and also some of the school property that we help manage for the, work in conjunction with the school to help manage. Here's a list of, you saw last year is what we were planning to do, and the red is what we've status on. A couple of the big, I'm not going to go read them all for you, but we can hit some of the, some of the big ones. We are still, we are still looking at, you know, we're still in the acquisition mode of property. There's a couple of key, what we feel are key parcels, they are but our existing parcels and would fit in nicely with how we, how we're managing those parcels. Keeping that in mind, obviously, there are not a lot of large, unfragmented tracts of land here in town any longer, and we do recognize that our purchasing and procurement ability is waning, so we're starting to transition to what we feel is more management mode and looking at what we need to do to maintain those properties that we have now. We're going to continue to work on the education side of our properties and coordinating with New Hampshire Executive, the New Hampshire Cooperative Extension, the school, just to see where we can fit in and provide more opportunities with education across town. We did spend a lot of time last year, as you did, on the NED pipeline. There was a tremendous amount of research and it really took a lot of time, much more time than we wanted to, and you consider why we, most of us joined the Conservation Commission was to get outside, that we're sitting in meetings and assessing proposals, and it was impacted what we wanted to be doing. So it was unfortunate, but I think we are still monitoring it now because even just the other day, there's been some submittals to FERC regarding the NED pipeline and some of the activities. So there's still, there's still activity there, and we're just still going to continue to monitor it and catalog all that documentation. The Chapter 111, that was one of our goals last year, to start working on the conservation portions of that and the laws and regulations around that. That didn't, didn't really come to fruition. And now, as you're looking at your five-year plan, we're going to hopefully be able to piggyback on that and come up with some suggestions that we can help. Target shooting ordinance in town was directed at one particular area, at the Greater Woods. And we were not, wasn't able to come up with a, with an ordinance for that, but we were able to post that as property owners, and with the help of the PWD, we were able to go up and clean up that area quite a bit. We took out a couple of truck loads of trash, did some work on the, had a workday, and they closed off access to the area, so now it's much more of a trail. And it's all properly posted now for no target shooting, so the police have the ability to go up there and enforce that area, which is nice. The Greater Woods, we purchased some more property in Greater Woods that was supposed to get wrapped into the plan, the stewardship plan. That's a little bit more of a process than we were ready to take on, so it has started. We're working on the appendices now, and it's going to be a little bit longer to get those new parcels into the plan and get their standard identifications and all their diversity up there monitored and written incorrectly, so that's something that's ongoing. You are familiar with the discontinuance of the South Greater Road, section of South Greater Road, and that was done back in 2015. The gates are up, which is now already borne witness to what we've seen a great reduction in the wetlands violations that we're noticing up there. There's no longer the four-wheel-drive vehicles being able to come up that road. It has also unfortunately blocked access from that area for some of the, you know, allowed activities, so we're working with PWD now and generating a bypass road that's going to be a new trail. Or we are still referring it to a South Greater Road, but we discontinued the road, so we're going to have to come up with a new name for it, but again, that's something we can do in the future. We were not able to come up with a consistent forestry management plan yet. We're, we have been in touch with our forester, and we've started looking at some of the, some of the items that we need to address. We'd like to come up with a, with a standard format and make it a little bit easier to come up with these processes, rather come up with the plans in the future. So it's, again, something that we're, we recognized that we wanted to do, but just didn't have the time to get to it this year. We're continuing to have beaver issues in town and water level issues in town. This year, we, this last year, we installed three more devices in town, and they have, I've been in touch with Lori at PWD, and they're very happy with the amount of, the lack of work that they have to do to keep these clear now. The constant daily activities, in some cases, to keep beaver dams or the impoundments from causing water problems are greatly reduced, so we're monitoring actively now. We've got eight in town, so we're monitoring, monitoring them and seeing, seeing great. We have a couple of different devices, but there's, there's eight, eight locations that have been addressed, and they're, they're, they're working very well, so.
There's actually over 30 locations where there's activity.
Oh, yes, yeah. There's, some, some are, you know, if it floods, it's in the woods, it's really not going to impact anybody, so it's just going to be a pond. Yes, right. We have, there are some more that need attention, but their physical characteristics don't really allow for us to do anything. If we fix it here, they're just going to go a couple of feet up and dam it again, and we'll fix it, yeah.
Is that in proportion, is that, is that in proportion?
I have no idea. I just know that we, it's a big town, there's still a lot of woods and a lot of wetlands and a lot of favorable places for beaver to establish themselves.
We have a tremendous amount of topography in town and a lot of water, so the habitat, the habitat is great. So in a town that's flat and doesn't have a lot of water, then 30 would be a lot to them, so.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Gage?
Yeah, a question, Jeff?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
What are the aids to prevent the dams from clogging up the culverts and so forth? What, how do you do that?
To, we're installing leveling, water leveling devices. They're called pond levellers. And what they are doing is a great, you know, 10 to 15 feet away from the impoundment, we're putting an inlet, and again, much further out beyond the impoundment, we're putting the outlet. And the beaver actually, where it's underwater, the whole thing is underwater, when they hear the water running, they go up and they dam around it, but they're damming around, you know, a large area, and the water flow is underneath it. So they can dam it all they'd like, and it doesn't impact the water flow. And it goes, we take that and it goes through the dam.
So it diverts their attention.
Yes.
Takes them out.
Yeah.
Aha, keeps them busy.
Yeah.
Is that the one on Medical Road?
Yes, yeah. The, yeah, that's, they call, they call that a cat, they, some of them are calling them a Cadillac grate, and that's, that's not really the correct term for it. That's an old style that used to see the, there used to be one out there.
These are now under.
Yeah, now there's that big round tub around there, and there's just an inlet in there and a pipe that goes all the way through, all the way through the dam. It comes out and just constantly is letting water through. You can, the end of Stump Pond or Meadowwood Pond, there's also one right there. There's two of them, actually, on the, on the large dam and then on the overflow device. So you can see a couple of different models in one location.
Interesting.
They're industrious.
Yeah, they're incredible.
They're fun to watch.
Yeah.
Where they're doing all the work, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly. We're, we're working hard to continue to, to bring more people into the property. We've got a lot of activity within the subcommittees, a lot of recreational groups, a lot of bikers, runners, dog walkers. We're, you know, asking those people to go out and, you know, bring your friends, come in there. So we're now seeing, we're now seeing people traveling from, you know, neighboring communities and neighboring states now coming and using our property, so that has forced us now also to look at how we're marking the properties and the trails, and we have a good standard now. Unfortunately, Horse Hill was done before we've had the standard, so it's a little different, but the rest of the trails and the rest of the systems are going to be very similar. I do have a map here for you guys to, this is a, something we've coordinated with the NRPC to generate some maps for us, so all of our maps are going to look the same and have the same feel. This is a draft version, and just let you guys kind of pass it around here. That version right there is a draft, so there are some modifications to it that, and we could certainly get you a real copy, but the reason I brought that one is that's the proposed stock that it's going to be on. So it's, yeah, it's not trimmed probably very well, but again, I won't be trimming them myself anymore, so. And the last thing we were focusing on, trying to do, was trying to document a lot of the policies and procedures that we use within, within our organization. One of the things that we found, when you have a volunteer organization, people are a little hesitant to say, yes, I'll volunteer, because they don't know, you know, how much time is it going to take? What do I need to do? Where, you know, what am I, what am I supposed to be doing? And that stops people from volunteering. So we felt that it would be helpful to generate, you know, a cookbook, a guidebook, for someone to pick up and say, look, you know, when you're ever in this role, these are the, these are the yearly things that we, that are common. Here's the amount of time normal, so we're just trying to slowly put together a list of activities and what we do and when we do them. So a lot of that's going to be coming out of some of the management plans. We're trying to write those into the, into management plans themselves, so when people read them, they'll know, okay, you know, in the spring, we're doing this, and in the fall, we're doing this. And either items like tonight, it's, yeah, you're going to spend a couple of hours putting together a review of what you've done over the previous year, and where you, where do we want to be going? So it takes, just give people an idea of what to expect. And we're hoping that through that, and we'll be able to garner some more support and volunteers within the MCC itself. Some of the, again, some of the more benign items that we just take care of and do on the side, these are some of the things that just happen over the course of the year. Obviously, with the NED pipeline, we had some properties that we did not feel we had a good idea of the wildlife and the diversity on that property. One in particular was the Continental Boulevard property, so we did contract with.
Bless you.
Bless you. We did contract with a, with a wildlife biologist, and they did a full assessment of that, of the Continental Boulevard property. They found some very interesting, some very interesting items as far as wildlife and small game. It's an unusual parcel because of the fact it's very, very wooded, very wet, but it's also, and it supports a tremendous amount of wildlife, but it's in the middle of a fairly industrial area. So there's not a lot of large, large game and a lot of predators, a lot of birds out there, but it's a pretty interesting area. And now with its proximity to the school, we're looking at perhaps some way of working that into a curricula for a biology class or some type of, some type of field trip type thing with the school, because it's, it's pretty close to the school. The complete report, we do have the finished report, and we'll be posting it soon. It will be available on our website and also on the town website. We, both the Wildcat Falls Conservation Area and Horse Hill has, now has a bench, some benches installed. If you happen to chance to go by and see the parking lot, you can see it in the parking lot in Wildcat Falls, a little bit more, a little bit more clandestine, but it's, it's there, and the benches are very, very well received. We've already had comments back from some of the people using the properties and appreciative of the fact they can stop and put their feet up for a second, so it's, it's been working well. The 17th Annual Seedling Giveaway is coming up. That'll happen, again, around the Mother's Day timeframe. Again, this is our 17th year. We are going to be coordinating with couriers to, to use the orchard again, but we've not really set a date or finished that work, but it's, it's coming. So again, keep that in mind, as you want some, something to do in your backyard. We have, we've continued negotiation on the purchase and easements of three parcels here, three more parcels in town. We've added about 120 acres to, to the management responsibility here. The wildlife, I'm sorry, the invasive problems we had at Brookside Drive, we had another review of that area with the forester and the sprayer. They went by and made sure it's working. It seemed to have been, seems to have been well, well done, and seems we've got most of it. That's going to lead us now into next year is to cataloging more invasive issues that we have in town. We've got quite a lot. We have a lot of water, so they tend to stick to that area and run, and run along it, so it's, got more work. Horse Hill, Horse Hill, Greater Woods, Wildcat Falls, Wasserman Park, these are all areas that have a tremendous amount of work, just regular footwork. We do plan a lot of workdays within the subcommittees and within the Conservation Commission just to go back and harden trails, fix trails, fix railings, rebuild stone walls, trim, so there's a lot of just day-to-day activities that go on from people walking. We do get quite a few support, you know, we have a website that we can get information from, and we get people who just use the trails, just walk, hey, I picked up trash today, you know, where, where should I put it when I do this? I, we had some problem getting through here because it was kind of bushy, so we trimmed it back. Is that okay? We get some of these, we get some of these questions, and it's nice to have people from the public getting out and reaching out to us and saying, look, this is, this is what we did, and this is what we saw. They sent us some pictures, so we're with a new website. We're going to be hoping cataloging some of those pictures and getting them on the website, so people can see, see their own pictures on the website. Obviously, that work in those, in those properties includes trail maintenance, bridge maintenance, any of the structures that we have out there. We have some work to do in the outdoor classroom. The chairs, the seats have pretty much run their course, and they've now become a bike ramp for some of the kids in the area, so we have some more work out there, but there's, there's a constant, a constant load of work to do outside, which is, again, the whole reason we got involved in this, so. And if you have a moment at some point in time, you should check out the new website, merrimackoutdoors.org. Tim has been working very closely with the WETB, and they've done a nice job in rebuilt the, rebuilt the website. As time goes on here, that's where we're going to be posting a lot of our pictures, and it should be, hopefully, we're trying to figure out what we can do to make it more relevant and drive more traffic to it, so people can get a better look at the properties. All right, finances, fun stuff. So we have, we have three major accounts that we, we hold and work through. Fund 51, which is the Special Conservation Fund. We use that primarily for our own training and seminars and such. There's land, Fund 53, which is funded out of LECT funds, and then this Horse Hill Nature Preserve Fund, which is, was generated back when Horse Hill was, was created, and it's a small fund that they use for improvements on the property themselves. As it stands right now, you can see the values there. We did have a large change in the Fund 53 when we bought some parcels out in Greater Woods, and so we're now down below to that, that value that you see there. The Horse Hill Fund hasn't really changed much. That was not used much this year at all. We do have a small budget that we, is managed by Tim Thompson, and again, this is a yearly, that's about the year, same yearly value. It stays fairly steady, and that's to account for some of our subscriptions and the web hosting that we know that we're charged for, and just some basic items that we use, that are used to run the organization. No questions on that one? I figured we'd get questions there. No?
Tom, you look like.
Yeah, I also wanted to, I was talking about things that the Conservation Commission has been doing. The commissions and their subcommittees have been discussing fairly vigorously, trying to set up recurring conservation activities that they, that will be scheduled on the various properties in town as an additional way of attracting people to those properties and getting involved in those kinds of activities. So there's a little bit, you know, outside of what they've been doing in the past, although they have done some stuff with, you know, like snowshoe races and cross-country skiing and things of that nature. They're talking about those kinds of activities so that they can, you know, highlight some of the better, some of the. of the better, some of the neat features of the properties that they manage. I think the other thing is, again, as I said last year, when you look at this report and the amount of work that these people are doing on a consistent basis, it's absolutely phenomenal, and the town is getting a huge return on their investment. And I think they are too, I think the volunteers are too.
That's why they're doing it, right?
Right. I mean, the activity increases on Greater Woods and Horse Hill and Wildcat Falls over the last couple of years has just been amazing. And everybody's talking about it. People that I know that I don't really consider to be, you know, outdoorsy types, oh yeah, can I hike over here? Because I hike over here already. And, you know, so it's just a huge quality of life amenity that this town has, that people are finally using, okay? I won't say that. They're suddenly realizing the value that's there and the ease of access to participate and to use these facilities.
Thanks. Thank you, Tom. Did you pay him to say that?
Not yet.
At least I'm not giving him mine.
Following up on what Tom said, some of our goals and activities for 2017, obviously, a lot of that is going to stay the same year to year. You know, we still have the maintenance on the properties, we still want to make sure we're doing the right thing. But as I said, we do still have, there's still some key parcels, there are parcels that we feel are key to our, you know, to the Merrimack and to the properties that we have now, and we're going to continue to pursue those. We are, you know, very seriously thinking about the fact that at some point in time and in very near future, the property is going to be spoken for, and regardless if we own it or it's owned by a private citizen, we're going to be into a management mode for these parcels, and that's going to take its own funding and its own, you know, work to keep them up and keep them manageable. So we're looking at what we need to start doing to transition into that mode, that planning mode. Our need to continue with the education outreach, I think is going to be key, because we don't have, we're, whenever we have members of the Conservation Commissions coming to us and meet with us, they're always amazed at the age, collective age of our group, and we're a very young Conservation Commission. When you look in the town, there's, right now, there's really only one retired member on our commission, which is unusual for the state. And I think part of the success that we've seen is the fact that we do have younger people enjoying the property, and I think that's with the education and the outreach, we can continue to get more people involved in the property and just on a personal level, and it doesn't have to be as part of the organization, but certainly just cognizant of the fact that it's there. We are going to continue to monitor the pipeline and other energy, you know, things that come up. The pipeline, as I said, there has already been another submission just the other day. It's not over, and I think it's foolish to think that we're done. So we're going to continue to monitor and catalog the items that we see that we feel are going to be impacting, or potentially impacting our properties. We are cognizant of the fact that you're doing your 111 update this year or starting it, and we'd like to be part of that. Certainly, we've got some, you know, major properties, and some of them are dealt very differently as far as enforcement, and we'd like to make sure that there's a consistent, you know, consistent plan across the properties, whether it be town property, the MCC property, or a school property, that there's a consistent view of what should be happening out there. It's very common when you're especially in Greater Woods, where we share management responsibility with the school, people don't know where the property line is. And they're up there walking, and all of a sudden, they're on school property, and they're doing something that they were able to do five feet away, they can do it, now they're not. And it's a difficult transition, and they're not malicious intent, they just don't understand. And we're not, you know, we're not about to go up there and put a property line up in the middle of the woods, because it's just, you know, it's, again, not really very conducive. So we're just looking to try to see what we can do to make those enforcement policies more consistent. Obviously, one of the items that we have now is a shooting, is a target shooting ordinance. At no point in time are we trying to stop people from shooting or stop people from hunting. The Greater Woods incident was such that you had a number of trails that were going through what was now being used as a shooting pit, and it had become quite dangerous. So after luckily some near misses, it was, you know, we've been able to deal with it. But again, that's something that we need to be able to deal with consistently across the board with all the properties. Greater Woods is still changing, we're about, there's a neighborhood going in there right by the school, there's some construction going on on the backside or towards Amherst. So that property's still in some flux, and we're going to continue to, as I said, pursue some of the acquisitions as we can. That will entail a lot of changes to the management plan, the stewardship plan, and that's something that we're going on now, it's in motion now, it's just, it's going to be a long process. As we've spoken again about the gates for the Greater Woods, South Greater Road, and that trail is being designed now, that's going to be something that we're pursuing grant money for to finish. It's a couple thousand feet, and it's going to be quite a job, but it's going to be something good. If you're familiar with Greater Woods now and the gateway trail, this is going to be something similar as an ability to get emergency vehicles up, but again, not allowing a continual flow of, you know, off-road vehicles into the property. There are standardized maintenance plans for the property, the stewardship plans is something we're going to be working on. Again, something each subcommittee is going to be tasked with to try to work and see what they feel are important. There, we have people that are out in these properties all day, or every day, and, you know, we can only, I can only go out into the ones a couple of times here, a couple of times there. Some of these people live on the property and are very, you know, very aware of what's out there. So they're having local support, and these subcommittees is very helpful to us. The water maintenance plan, the water level plan, the beaver management, we were, our existing beaver management plan is quite old, and it's not something that really works right now. If you followed it and read it as it stands now, it doesn't really work very well anymore. So we're working with PWD to make sure that they have a clear understanding what they can do and where they can do it, and we just want to try catalog, being able to catalog where that work's happening, so we have an idea of how much, you know, how much an area is causing a problem and what we can do to solve those issues. So as we've said, we've been very successful now. They're very aware of where these items are, and they've really had very little callback to go back and fix them. There's a couple that are in neighborhoods and are quite visible, and after the initial installation, the water level does fluctuate a bit, and once the beaver go in and do their job, everything levels off and now it stays put. So the long term is much better. Meadowwood Pond is a great example, they had huge fluctuations in the water level, and it was causing, you know, one day there would be very high water, the next they'd be very low, and now you've got all that rotting decay, decaying debris on the sides, and it smelled bad, and the dogs were in it, and so it was just, yeah, and then they smelled wonderful. So it was, it caused a lot of problems, and we've been back there now a number of times, and the water level's very stable. And the people around there initially were, you know, not very happy with what we were doing, but now we're very happy with how it stands. So it's a successful project. We're going to continue working to bring people into the properties. This is why we started it. So things like the maps, people being able to navigate the trails without getting lost is something that's going to be helpful. And it's, you know, the easier, the easier that they navigate and the more comfortable people feel out there, the more they'll show up. Again, the website, that's an ongoing process, that's never going to stop, that's something that's going to be, you know, with us until we're done. So it's a non-stop process. And then our processes and procedures, again, documenting what we do and making those available to volunteers so they know what's expected of them when they show up, and hopefully, again, get some more volunteers into the organization. You saw from the first slide, we're a little short right now, so we can use some more bodies. Again, so we're looking for help from you. It doesn't, again, nothing really changes that much from year to year, so we are going to continue to bring to you when we have land that we find, that we feel is important to us. We obviously like your assistance and your guidance as to, you know, what parcels are important to you. We're looking for people, and you guys, as, you know, in your position, you know a lot of people in town, so talk us up. We're a fun group. We'd like some of your friends on our board, so. Townwide GIS system, I know this is something that we've talked a little bit, and we're gathering a lot of data now. Trails are all GPSed, the beaver plans are all, all those devices are all GPSed. All that work is information that's held in multiple places now. And a single townwide GPS with a certain layer on it for conservation is something that we feel would be very important. So I know we've had a representative from the council, from our commission, worked with the town on this, and it's kind of, I don't know where we're standing right now, we have a new GIS system, but it's not in-house yet, and so we'd like to have it in-house so we can add to it, you know, the devices that we're putting out in the woods and trails. Update 111, we'd like to be involved in that with you. Obviously, Tom's, as our ex officio, is keeping us up to date, and through Tom, we'd like to make sure that we're involved with this process. And feedback, we'd like to know. This is, you know, we're going down our own path and thinking we're doing what we should be. If you guys have some concerns or have some ideas, we'd very much like to know. And it's, any one of you to any one of us, it's an open door, so please feel free.
Excellent.
Questions? Yes, Mr.?
Thanks, Gage.
Certainly.
You guys are always a great committee, doing all that work, tons of work. The reason they're so young is because it's young man's work you do. And thanks for the benches, by the way. But I just had a couple of quick questions. You spoke of key parcels, did you say three? Or was there a number? I don't...
There are a number of still large, not a large number, but there's still a number of parcels in town that are interesting to us. We have property of Budding Fields Farm, that's going to be a development now. The developer has already discussed maybe an easement or some type of grant on that property. And that's the type of thing we're looking for, is you have waterfront property, you have two parcels that are not connected, if we can find a way to connect them and keep the greenway there, that's the type of thing we're looking at, we consider a key parcel. And it's something that abuts an existing...
Right. And I guess, I didn't know if you had a value on these larger pieces that you were contemplating, or if that's something you haven't put much thought into because we're not close yet.
Yeah, sure, if you want to talk, the value...
How many acres does Conservation Commission alone have?
Okay.
Just as a general...
We're in the 1,200 to 1,400 acreage.
Okay, but you had said that's everybody.
Yeah, so that's not...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, 1,200, I'm sorry, okay.
So we have publicly discussed now, because of where these projects are, a couple of different projects that are going to give us three, I actually think it's four parcels. One of them is the Chestnut Hill development that's being proposed near the middle school. When that actually, when, as a condition of them starting, they had to get a DES wetland permit in place, and part of their wetland mitigation is going to provide us about 100 acres of that large parcel. If you viewed all their little parcels all clumped together as one big mass, we're going to end up with about 100 acres on two sides of that. So there's a piece. The other parcel that Gage talked to a little bit earlier, the Fields Farm, used to be known as the Ireland Property, it's along Amherst Road. The Timasian development that's going on down there now, I don't know what they call it, I think it's, I forget the name for it. So the developer and owner of that has designated some common space around the outside of that that kind of looks like a horseshoe, but provides land right along the South Heagan River. When that parcel reaches a point where the development is mostly done, and they no longer need the common land for staging and other things like that, we will be having the opportunity to acquire that property. It's not clear yet whether it'll be an easement or an outright donation. I think donation is the direction the developer's going in with that, so. So we believe that will happen sometime in this year in '17, so you'll be seeing us come together with that. And when we combine that 20-something acres with the nearly 100 acres we have with Fields Farm, we have quite an opportunity then to do something with that parcel, Fields Farm. And I'm not sure if Tom or Jody before Tom had updated you, but we're looking at providing kayak and canoe access off of the South Heagan River, providing a place for people to park and maybe provide a picnic area or something like that, that's in tune with the way the George Ireland, the Ireland family donated that parcel. They donated it for non-motorized use and recreational use, and we'd like to see that vision, but we've been so busy with all the other large properties that it's, you know, one of these days it'll make it up to the top of the list. And of course, you know, if we have more hands, it makes for less work for everybody, and we can do more, so. So that's really where we're at for the key parcels, and there is one more out near the Greater Woods area that we've been somewhat verbal about wanting to get our hands on and try to work on, so. In doing that, we'll complete the vision that's in the town master plan for that area of town, and I think, you know, in the next two or three years, we might be able to do that, so.
Great. Thank you. And I just have two other quick questions, if I may. Do you have an idea, a rough idea, of when this comes to a conclusion, what maintenance costs could typically be annually? You know, because it's trail maintenance and things like that, and I would imagine because they're being built properly, there's not going to be washouts necessarily, and so it would just be, I'm imagining vegetation, maybe a little patching here and there, but do you have an idea? Because I'm thinking about the grand finale, when the Conservation Fund is not needed any longer for purchasing properties, what might be necessary to have, you know, have it, you know, funding itself, I guess? So I don't know if you have any thought on that?
Well, that's one of the items that we're starting to really look into, is what does it take to transition from a procurement mode into a management mode? And that's something, you know, we've fixed items that we've needed as we go, it's never been, you know, how much, what are we trying to budget out? What are we trying to budget out to do? And just because we've never had to look at it that way.
Yep, no, fair enough.
So this is something, you know, this year, this year and next year, we're probably going to be the start, the really start of what does it take to keep these properties up, and what are we spending? Because right now, we have a good volunteer base, we've got very active subcommittees, the ConCom itself is very active, so a lot of this work is getting done, you know, for free, so to speak. Are we always going to be able to do that? I don't know. So that's, again, that's going to be part of that transition planning, is to what does that take?
Okay. Thanks, Gage. And then the last thing is, you said some activities were precluded once we put the new gate up at South Greater Road.
So there's three gates, there's three gates out there now, and they are, it's, if you're familiar with South Greater Road, coming off of Wilson Hill, there's a lot of ATV activity out there, a lot of large off-road vehicle activity out there. So we were getting full-size trucks, Jeeps, and they travel up along what was the original South Greater Road, which is now underwater. So it's, again, a very old road, it's been there forever. The beaver have found that area and said that they've claimed, staked their claim, and it's now underwater, so people are still using the road.
Yeah, but you said that when you put the gate up, the proven property uses, and I was wondering what those were.
Right, well, so, those gates stopped the trucks from getting in there.
Which is what you wanted.
Which is what we wanted. But you are allowed to ride, you know, dirt bikes and ATVs up and along the power lines and stuff like that. So right now, they can't get around that gate, so they have to get in, they have to get in there from another way. Unfortunately, they'll find a way. And that's not what we want.
They'll make a way.
Yeah, that's not what we want. We want to give them away. We don't want to preclude the usage of it, we want to give you a way to get in there. Unfortunately, this is something that had to get done.
Yeah, no.
And has done it, so now, and we've, and again, Kyle and his crew have been very helpful, and we've done a lot of transit work out there, and have a good, what we feel is a good road laid out. And now it's going to, what it's going to take to build that.
Excellent. Thanks, Gage. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Dan?
I want to preface my comments by saying, you guys know, I'm a big supporter of your commission, support you guys, but when you ask our opinion, you want our input, I'm going to be more skeptical. I'm nervous about you guys expanding anymore. I'm nervous having under $1 million for the future, so kind of where Finley was going. If you don't know the maintenance costs, I would treat that money really precious for now on. I don't think it's enough. It is enough, it's enough for now, but if you were to keep buying more and having that amount fall below $500,000, I think that's a danger zone for maintenance of the future, because I just don't see another $2 or $3 million gift coming in someday to, in perpetuity, or at least the next 25, 30 years. So I think that's a critical way I'd be looking at. If I was on the board, I'd be a voice of saying, no more. 1,600 acres is a lot, let's manage what we got. Which leads me to my next comment about volunteers is healthy now, and what can we do to help you more? It's critical. And I think your website might be the key of keeping that volunteerism alive, and having the work done that you need to do, I think is really important. And trying to get two more board members on your committee is vital. But I'm concerned, I think, about the, what it takes to maintain for the next 20 years, and I just think what you have left right now is critical. So I know you want to do more, but I hate to have guys...
No.
And one last thing, from our own experience, volunteerism, you get burnt out. And, you know, your best guy one day says, I gotta quit, just because they, sometimes they snap more than the regular, average gray person, you know, who's in between.
Are you planning on doing something?
Yeah, I do enough. I'm all over the map.
No, I'm talking about the snapping.
No, snapping, oh, no, no.
He's all over the map.
I'm dreaming of retirement, is that a sign? But that, I worry about you too, or all groups, that volunteerism is strong for a while, I just hope nobody gets burnt out on it, which I know a lot of you committee members, I think sometimes maybe you are on the verge, because you guys do so much. So that's important to keep your eye on.
Okay, thank you.
Jackie?
I think some of your ideas are so good. I like the map a lot, and I've been looking forward to such a thing. I didn't know you were even working on it. Is that going to be on your website to print out?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And they'll, as I said, there's going to be four, initially there'll be four, for all the four major properties, so, and they'll all have the similar look and feel.
Good, maybe I won't get lost so much. Even my dog sat down once, I thought, oh, great. Now I'm going to pick him up. Another thing is, have you ever, I'm sure you've thought of it, but I wondered if it ever went anywhere, that sometimes developers can use common land as a way to get maybe in a few more lots available to them because of the gift of the common land. And I was wondering if, like, your work on that new, what is it, Chestnut Run?
Chestnut Hill.
Chestnut Hill. Is that the one that comes into, like, the middle school, or very close to the middle school?
Yes.
Because I was thinking that it might be useful, maybe not in that case, but to talk to developers about giving the common land to the town, especially if it abuts, for all of us to use, and it would be treated the same with the planning board, as though they had kept it for just the residents, just thinking. I think it's because I was reminded of that reading about the profile.
There are some subdivision laws that are governing how that is broken up, and, but, so yes, I mean, that's exactly what has happened now with Chestnut Hill and somewhat with Tamesian. They've maximized the lots they can have on a footprint.
Yeah.
They've created a certain amount of common space, which allows them to have the minimum lot sizes, and the property around it, which is, it's not unusable, but it's not, it's not developable, is what would be coming our way.
I think in general, I agree with Dan, too, about not going nuts anymore, you know, to be very selective, both in the properties and the money. I would like to see that as well. And I was just wondering, one more thing, oh yeah, you're standing, are they standing subcommittees, Horse Hill, not Wasserman Park, but Greater Woods? Weren't those two, Horse Hill and Greater Woods?
Yes.
Yep, and they're still active?
Yes, and Wildcat Falls.
And all under, oh, and Wildcat Falls, okay. And they're all under the Conservation Commission? And do they come to your meetings and all, or do they kind of operate by themselves?
Similar to how you're configured, we have an ex officio from, as a member of each of the subcommittees. So we have a direct line into that subcommittee, into the MCC.
And lastly, Gage, I think your idea about writing down, a general idea of the duties that people might have, if they join your committee, I think it's a good one, and I think other committees ought to adopt it, because people don't have a clue, you know, and they might like to help, but they don't want to get in over their heads, or get on the committee that they really can't help, they don't have the skills. That's all.
No, we don't want to scare people away from skills, we will train you.
Oh, that's true, too, yeah.
Feel free to just show up with a pair of boots, and we'll...
Tom Kegge?
Thank you. Gage, thanks. I want to echo what everybody else has been saying, that we really do appreciate the effort that you guys do. And I know, especially with the NED pipeline and stuff, you had an extra load last year, so with that long list of things, you guys did a tremendous amount of work, and we do appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
So just on a lighter side, at the very early part of your presentation, you talked about a third vernal pool party, and I wondered if maybe you could tell me what the heck that is.
So this coming spring, we're, Greater Woods has a tremendous amount of topography and a lot of water, so we end up with a lot of vernal pools, which are seasonal pools, but they're consistent seasonal pools. They show up every year in the same location. They're a huge breeding ground for amphibians.
For what amphibians?
Amphibians, you know, and so this year, and we've contracted with the same gentleman, the same wildlife biologist, to come out and have a, we started it, we haven't, there's no kind of annual, we've done it every few years, so we've gotten the third one in probably six or seven years now, the vernal pool party. And we started it up at the middle school because we have access to, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with the mural that they drew up there in the middle school, we started it with Anne La Croix, and we had got kids in the science class to come out in March, April timeframe, when the critters are starting to change from egg mass to, you know, real, having real bodies and trying to move and trying to migrate, and taking them into the vernal pools, and standing in the vernal, and holding egg mass, and seeing, you know, seeing what's happening, and seeing the mayfly generations, and getting, just to see what's out there. These are a great, a great location, and a lot of these pools are right off the main gateway trail. So you can, it's very little walking, you stay right on the trail. If you don't, if you're not comfortable being in the woods, you can stand right there and still see everything. And boy, I'll tell you, having these kids sit there and hold this gelified, globular, vibrating mess in their hands.
Sounds exciting.
Oh, okay.
You have to miss it.
They're pretty excited. And the fact, and they find out that they have a hole in their boots, and my foot is wet, and so it's, it's fun. And as I said, when it gets closer and we have the date, I can certainly let you know. It's a good day to walk out there with your kids, your grandkids, and have some fun.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments? The other thing I would finish by saying is, in the future, I also have concerns like Dan, in terms of the capacity and future procurement. Now, that doesn't mean I wouldn't positively consider it. I mean, you're talking about an access for kayaking, that's a unique kind of thing. But I also get concerned about the amount of funds that are left, and at what point do we maximize the size? I mean, we could go on and purchase half the town, but that doesn't help you maintain what you have.
Right.
So I just want to let you know that in the future, I'll be looking at that from this point of view. I'll be a little bit more, I don't want to say critical, but I'll examine it more closely in that light, okay?
Well, and, yes, and to follow up on that, I mean, this is not something we're taking lightly either.
Right.
I mean, we're very cognizant of the fact that this is, the UCT funds are not inevitable.
Pretty much it, yeah.
They will stop. And, again, but within town, we don't have, again, huge tracts of land that are going to be available.
But we have a pretty good amount of land now, so I think.
Yes, yep.
In conservation, so I think it's, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of what's going on in increasing the usage, all those things, okay?
Good.
But again, I'll be just analyzing it a little bit more critically.
Okay.
In that light. And you realize, and you realize that we're having this conversation because it's not a heavy agenda. Go ahead.
[laughing]
Otherwise, I'd be cutting you really short.
There was something I forgot to ask, and it was the parcel near the Thornton School on, off of Continental, that you were talking about, where the fire station had been talked about a few years ago. So is that kind of like off the table, in a sense, of your future plans, that you may not want to have that land sold for a fire station of the future? And kind of on us, because we haven't brought up that station for several years, and maybe it's on the back burner to a point where it's not being considered anymore?
The school board gave us, I don't believe we're talking about the same parcel.
The same property?
It's a school board property.
It's, the school board owns the property.
It's near the Conservation.
Oh, so it's not, it's not part of...
This is, this is on the Nashua side of Continental Boulevard.
When you said near the school, that was what I had assumed.
It's across Continental Boulevard from the school.
It is.
It's further down.
Well, and further down, it's a wet parcel.
It's close to the penitent.
So it's not the location that I'm thinking of?
No.
You know which one I'm talking about?
I believe I do, yes.
All right.
Yeah. Anything? You can't wait to be released, can you? Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Yep, certainly.
Unfortunately, you had a light agenda.
That's a good question.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. Okay, public hearing. This is related to consideration of changes to the Town of Merrimack Charter, the Town Council to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Article 8, Section 8-18, Town Treasurer of the Town of Merrimack Charter pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 49-B:5. Okay, any, we can do discussion, then I'll do the actual public hearing. I think it's, we've had discussions about this in the past, and this is related to having a treasurer appointed versus voted upon.
Rather than elected.
Rather than elected, thank you. Okay, why don't I open the public hearing at 8:06? And aren't you proud of me, you didn't have to remind me? Usually, to open it, it's one of my faux pas's.
You've been coached well.
How long, how long has it taken, Tom?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, saying none, close of public comment, 8:07. Okay, we need a motion to move to the ballot.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Tom Mayhart, seconded by Bill Boyd.
Point of inquiry, Madam Chair.
This is, my understanding is, this is just the one we have to do, and then we'll go to the ballot. I'm sorry, Bill, the other...
Just a question. In reading Carrie Ann Roman's memo to Eileen dated January, updated December 21, 2016, there's several steps that are involved, and then it goes on to say, "Within seven days of the last approval received from Secretary of State's Office, AG, and the Department of Revenue, Town Council votes to put the proposed amendment on the ballot at the next election." So my question is, is the motion premature, considering that there are approvals that need to be obtained prior to the Town Council?
Good question, I have the same one. My understanding is, this motion puts it into the process. It starts the process, is that correct, Eileen and Paul? It initiates the process that you're talking about.
But the motion is to move it to the...
And it starts the process to put it onto the ballot.
So technically, there's going to be two motions to put it to the ballot.
There...
Go ahead, Tom, please.
There could be. The Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State and Revenue Administration will review it. They may come back with suggestions of changes that they would like us to use in place of what we may be proposing to place on the ballot. If that's the case, then this council would have to review those changes and decide whether or not they were going to place them on the ballot or not.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why there's that two-step process, because they could, because for instance, when we had the initial charter sent to them, they came back and told us a couple of things that we knew they weren't going to approve.
So...
But we submitted them to them anyway.
So the motion to move it to the ballot is appropriate pending the appropriate approvals, and if the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed?
Correct.
Then we don't have to revisit the issue. And if the AG and anybody else has...
If they don't make any changes, then we're all set.
But if they have changes, then we have to come back, take a second bite at the apple.
Okay, fair enough.
Start all over.
Okay.
Okay.
That works.
All set to vote?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, Tom, yes.
Just, I don't recall, maybe I totally missed it. Did you ever read the changes that are here, or, I mean, we had a public hearing, and people have a chance to read what's been published, but I don't know that we've ever publicly stated the changes that we intend to make.
During our discussion, didn't we have a draft?
No, the motion that was made last time was to instruct the Town Office Manager to create a draft.
Okay.
So...
I'd be very happy to read it, I think if that's appropriate. Okay, this is what's being proposed. Treasurer, there shall be a Town Treasurer, hereafter called Treasurer, who shall have all the powers and duties granted by this charter and New Hampshire state law, provided, however, that in making investments of town funds, the Treasurer shall follow the written investment policy as adopted or modified by the Town Council. The Treasurer shall be, and this is a section that's been changed, the Treasurer shall be appointed by the Town Council on the basis of merit and fitness to perform his or her duties, and may be removed by the Town Council. It would then continue vacancies in the Office of Treasurer shall be filled pursuant to New Hampshire state law. What has been changed, and has been omitted now, crossed off, is the Treasurer shall be elected on an at-large basis to a term of three years at the town election. Okay? Thank you for that. Okay, now are we ready for a vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to move to the ballot, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, 7:00. Okay, legislative updates from state reps, I don't see any. Town manager report, Eileen?
Okay, the Department of Resources and Economic Development has approved the town's recent application to amend the economic revitalization zones along DW Highway, as you requested, which will incorporate the parcel that Spraying Systems Company is relocating, that is relocating from Hudson. Spraying Systems Company is a mix of research and development and manufacturing of spray nozzles for a wide variety of markets. They are a privately-held company with an international manufacturing presence. The New Hampshire facility was established in Hudson in 1988, and about, in a 6,000-square-foot building. Their move to Merrimack will be taking over 130,000 square feet of the GT Advanced Technologies buildings. Spraying Systems now owns the property, and GTAT, or GT Advanced Technologies, will maintain a small presence in the building for approximately 18 months. Spraying Systems has 60-plus employees currently, and will be adding more staff in the future. The designation as a site, of the site as an ERZ, allows for the company to apply for tax credits from the state business profits and business enterprise taxes. The designation of the ERZ has no impact on local tax collection. So, once again, welcome to them. The Merrimack Police Department is a... So, once again, welcome to them. The Merrimack Police Department is excited to start their Twenty-Second Citizens Police Academy. Twenty-one Merrimack residents have signed up to learn more about the police department. Participants will experience how the department functions, meet the officers who are dedicated to keeping our communities safe. Merrimack has been awarded another Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, or TAP, grant. This is in the two thousand and sixteen application process. The, the grant was submitted to extend sidewalks on DW Highway from the library to Twin Bridge Road, and install sidewalks on Woodbury Street. The competitive program received forty-seven requests for thirty-four million dollars, and the program only has four point five million available statewide, and Merrimack is one of the twelve communities picked for the award. The award for the total, the total cost of, the total amount of the award or the project is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which the town would contribute a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, or twenty percent, and the federal government would contribute five, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, again. So, that's really nice, and congratulations to Kyle and Dawn, who is the town engineer, and everybody else who has worked on, and the Town Center Committee, obviously, who have, because of their plan, that was already, like they call shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready.
Were ready and poised, in many of these cases, to get these grants, and...
We're very fortunate.
We're very fortunate, yeah.
It's nice to be proactive.
Mm-hmm, it's important. This is interesting. Town officials will be meeting with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, Turnpike's Division to discuss, it's DOT, so I'm going to use the word DOT, Department of Transportation, two hundred and, two thousand seventeen work in Merrimack. Turnpike's plans to present these projects to the Town Council at a later date. The projects include paving of Continental Boulevard from Industrial Drive to one oh one A, paving of Industrial Drive from US Three to Continental Boulevard, new lanes at the Tinker Road intersection of Continental Boulevard, including adding a left train, turn lanes, construction of maintenance ramps at Exit Twelve interchange for the Bedford Open Road Toll, ORT conversion, and new signals at Exit Twelve intersections due to the above work.
Could you repeat that Exit Twelve thing?
Construction of maintenance ramps at the Exit Twelve interchange for the Bedford Open Road Toll conversion.
Okay, so that, the toll booth, the toll booth, that is, no, toll booth is going to be open road.
Up there, or is it up in Bedford?
In Bedford.
Yes, in Bedford, yeah. Bedford.
So what is it?
But why, why is Exit, why is Exit Twelve related to it?
Because it's, I believe because it's now configured to, to not be open road, in other words, to have people staff it and...
But Exit Eleven, Exit Twelve is open now.
If it's a maintenance road, and I have no idea, but I'm thinking it's so they have access to get...
To go northbound.
Right, that's, that's a guess. I don't know if that's...
Sorry, I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared to answer that.
Well, we'll find out what I mean with that.
We will find out, yes, we will find out.
We guess, I don't know why we're suspicious.
We will find out before then, so...
Can you find out the cost, too, while you're at it?
The cost to us?
No, 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 the cost to the state for doing that, because that's obviously not very, many years old.
Right.
And the planning is so horrid that they did the same thing up in Houston, just, so I'm just curious, but it's not real critical.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
Okay, consent agenda, none. Oh, business, none. New business?
Yeah, probably.
Come on down, Tim. Land donation for the Merrimack Conservation Commission, submitted by Middlesex Chairman Gage Perry, he's dating out of this one, and MCC member, Tim Tenhavon, that's obviously being presented by Tim. You didn't make him do both, that's kind of you.
No.
Town Council to consider the approval of a donation of land to the Conservation Commission pursuant to RSA thirty-six dash A. The parcel of land is known as Tax Map six B dash one eighty-six, and is located along Woodbine Lane.
Right, so what I've done is I've prepared a presentation that's very similar to the previous donations that we've talked about over the last three or four years. In fact, I still use the same background and everything else, so that way we all feel warm and fuzzy, so. All right, so the reason why we're here tonight is this slide. So RSA thirty-six dash A is the Conservation Commission RSA, and, and under colon four are our powers, and one of them is to receive the gifts of money, personal property, real property, water rights, et cetera, but we can only receive those with the approval of the local governing board, which is you folks. So that's why we're here tonight, we're seeking your approval for the donation of real property. In order for us to do that, the RSA at the next colon five requires us to hold a public hearing for receiving the real property, which we did, back in December. And that's a copy of the notice that went out into the union leader in all the appropriate places, so. So, really, what we're talking about is Tax Map, and I have a map, so you can see where it is in relation, and I believe you all have a copy of the presentation anyway, so. But we're talking about Tax Map parcel six B one eighty-six. It's approximately seven acres. It's a donation from the Profile Estates Homeowners Association. Behind me, to my left, your right, members of the Homeowners Association, including the board members, are here as well tonight. It's, this parcel is accessed between eleven and fifteen Woodbine Lane. It abuts Watkins Forest, and is a part of the same Babusick Brook aquifer as the Mitchell Woods property is. Recently, members of the MVD came to speak about a well that they want to put out in that area. What's great about this parcel is it provides upland buffer for that well. So, so this, this donation is going to serve a number of conservation-related purposes, and provide buffer for the well, which will be future drinking water for our town, so. The parcel itself does have a well easement for, for access. There is a well on private property, but to access the well for maintenance, the previous owners had, had provided an easement for a landowner to be able to use the property to get there. And you'll get an idea where that is when we look at the map on a, on upcoming page, so. The intent is to leave it in its natural state, pretty much just the way it is. So, some more details about the donation. We're going to utilize funds from our Fund Fifty-three. In fact, we, tonight, we talked about Fund Fifty-three a little bit. The funds that we're going to require are to cover recording fees, some staff support, and town attorney fees. In your presentation, slightly different than what I'm showing you now, at the time I put the presentation together for you, we still had an open issue around some back taxes, but that's all been resolved, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that if you'd like. Essentially, there are no more back taxes. The commission had set aside up to sixty-five hundred dollars to complete this activity. The real number is half that, or just slightly less than half of that, so when you include all the fees and attorney involvements. The Profile Estates Homeowners Association went through quite a rigmarole in order to get to where they are today, and there's quite a backstory to that. And in order for us to make sure that everything was appropriate and legal and not, and, and good for the town, we had to utilize our attorney for a number of things. But she, she provided some very valuable input that, that enabled the Homeowners Association to do what they needed to do to wrap things up with the deed and everything, too, so I think it was good all the way around, so. The town assessment on the property is zero dollars. It's, it was never meant to be a buildable lot, never meant to be utilized in any way except for open space. It is the common land for this development when it was put together back in the very early seventies. So the property is being donated as is for conservation purposes. It does have a restricted deed that, that's being placed on it, very, very similar to the deeds that we've done on all the previous land donations and purchases that we've done over the last few years, with all the right RSA mentions and everything else. The property also has a Declaration of Covenants that was put together when it was created as open space as part of the, the development back in the seventies. Those covenants will carry over. We did have to work with the Homeowners Association to amend them, so that it would allow public access, which previously the Declaration stated only access for the landowners of the subdivision, so that's been opened up, and the declarations were modified so that the Homeowners Association could make this donation possible, so. So that's all done and proper, and been worked through legal review. Carrie's been actively involved. So, the donation was contingent on a public hearing, and that's completed, and really now we're looking for the approval of the Town Council, and I believe I had provided deed information and things like that, so you all have that in the background, so. So this is probably a little hard to see in the map behind you, if I can get the mouse to come up. So, the green parcel is the parcel. There's a little offshoot that you can see. Oh, look at that. Ooh. So, so that little offshoot is Woodbine Lane, and, and in that area is the easement for the, for the private well access. What you'll see below the property, to your right, is Watkins Forest. To your left is a private parcel, but further down to where you see all the blue and everything, that's Mitchell Woods. The blue you see in the top of the picture is Babusick Brook. The blue you see in the lower part of the picture is the water that feeds into Babusick Brook from Mitchell Woods, and that water actually originates out on Greater Woods on the other side of Babusick Lake Road. And we have a number of Beaver Control devices in there. And the MVD well is in the, is near that lower blue section, that's where it's going to be located, so. So, so that's this parcel here. Let me go to the next page. Now, can we undo that? So what I want, what I'm doing with this picture is, is, and I know you can see the words on your thing, but basically the words say that this one parcel is really part of a number of parcels that the town or the commission has ownership and management over. Basically, what we're doing is we're protecting Babusick Brook and the feeder areas that feed Babusick Brook, and that whole aquifer there. Babusick Brook is a state special water body like the Sauhegan River, and it's, it falls under special rules and things like that, so. So this falls right in line with what the state would like us to be doing as well, in protecting these, these major water areas, so. Now, let's, let's see if I can get this to, am I hitting the wrong button, Paul? Okay? Oh, all right. There you go.
How's that?
Great. So, so really, what I'd like to do is take a moment to thank the Profile Estates Homeowners Association for their generous gift. Thank you all. I'd like to thank town staff. Eileen and, and her folks have been busy helping us put this together. This is something that's been in the works for the Homeowners Association over a couple of years, and for the Conservation Commission and town staff for nearly a year at this point, so. And, you know, Carrie Anne and, and the town attorney's office, they do tremendous work for us, so, tremendous work. So, so why we're here tonight is, we're here for the commission, we're seeking your approval of the donation, and for you to authorize the town manager to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the town to complete the transfer and acceptance of the donation, and of course, I'll take any questions.
Any more questions?
Yes, Dan.
It's like, I'll go for motion first, and then after...
That's fine.
I'd like to persuade to the land donation for the Merrimack Conservation Commission pursuant to RSA thirty-six dash A. The parcel of land is known as Tax Map six B dash one eighty-six, and is located along Woodbine Lane, and to authorize the town manager to sign all documents on behalf of the town, which are necessary to compete, to complete the transfer and acceptance of this donation.
Motion made by Dan.
Seconded.
Seconded by Phil Boyd. And what's your discussion now between the votes?
Real quick, thanks for all the hard work. It's something that we, we know has been coming, so I'm glad today it has arrived, and it just, it's a perfect tie-in to, as you explained, to what was already owned by the town, Watkins Forest and Mitchell Woods. So, thanks for, thank you, especially for the donation.
Thanks.
I was just going to say to the, to the owners, to thank you again for the donation, but it really bookends the purchase over on Clara Drive, to really compress, you know, that, that buffer to this particular area there, because I know that MVD had, you know, as Tim alluded to, looking to put a well there, so I think this is a win-win for, for the community to, to obtain this parcel and be able to develop, protect and develop one of our aquifers there, so. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Anyone else wanting to have a question or a vote? Are you for vote? All those who can, say aye.
Aye.
Any of those saying no, seven zero zero.
Great, thank you.
And thank you personally as well.
Thank you.
For the homeowners' generation. And I'm glad we were able to work on all of our things.
Yeah.
And I, Kink is putting my microphone on, right? Just, thank you. Okay, land donation for Town of Merrimack, submitted by, and I'm going to have a terrible name pronouncing this, does it, A.G. Kamur, Kamar? Okay, Town Council to consider the acceptance of a land donation offer of property located on Pine Street, known as Tax Map parcel sixty dash one hyphen slash one twenty-two dash one. Is the proponent here, Ajir?
I don't know.
Okay, so...
Madam Chair, motion to table.
Well, why don't we, I'm going to ask Eileen to have a little explanation, because maybe she knows something. Apparently, the person who submitted this is not here.
Doesn't appear to be, no.
Okay, so...
What I know is that several years ago, the town did what, has...
An auction.
Did an auction of the properties that, that the town did not want, and this person purchased the property. So, it's not my call, but I don't know why we'd want it back. We sold it, because we had no use for it.
Jackie?
Yeah, well, one big, big curiosity I had was why it seems to abut to London Court land, and I was wondering why they weren't interested, or whether anybody's approached them, or he could sell it to them.
Yeah, that was a question that Becky and I had when we were discussing it.
I don't know why we have to...
Because it doesn't abut to anything we own.
No, it doesn't.
We sold it because it was this little piece of something.
It's like...
Which if we take it back, we're in the exact same boat.
Yeah. Is it for like four tenths of an acre?
Yeah, no, no.
No.
No, it's like...
It's four one hundredths of an acre.
Four one hundredths of an acre, okay, just a little bitty bit.
You could put a picnic table up.
It's a little piece of...
I was, I was going to say we could put...
Or in Manchester, you could build a mansion on that.
Say we could put a monument there to Dave Yakupoff and call it Yakupoff Square.
There you go.
Finley.
Is, um, I agree, we really don't want it back.
That's why we sold it in the first place.
Right, but, but I get why, you know, I was getting a tiny little tax bill, I guess, and, and it's, it's a nuisance for everybody, but I, I read it that he wants to give it to the town.
Yeah.
So what, did he, does any, did anybody ask him if he wanted to give it to London Court, the owners of London Court?
Not to my knowledge. He just, he just called Becky and told her that he wanted to donate it, and...
Because I, I didn't even think of the angle, but I had asked Eileen, just don't pay the taxes on it, and, but apparently, that's a blemish on your credit.
A huge blemish.
And my cost of...
Enormous.
And be a headache for him. I hadn't even thought about that, and so...
Yeah, we'd have to...
Yeah. I wonder if we did take it back, if we could, before we do that, to consult, Pat, does Patterson and Company still manage London Court? If they still own the land, if they want to...
We could do it, but, you know, I mean, the person owns it, and it's really not up to us to broker a transaction between them.
Change it.
But it might be suggested to him, to them, yeah, I agree.
But even, see, for me, it's, it's, it's so minuscule that you could incorporate it in the right of way, if you really thought you had to do something.
Well, that's...
And honestly, I don't want, I don't know why he purchased it. I'm interested in that. I would have loved for him to be here this evening, I'm just curious, but, but I just don't, you know, I, I don't want him to have the burden of the silliness of it, if we could do something to make it simple, unless there's thousands of dollars cost in, in putting that in the...
We've already spent too much money. Let's just take it back and forget it. I mean, my thought. I mean, it's my thought.
Go ahead, Dan.
I don't even have heartburn taking it back either. It's just, I think buyer's remorse, maybe. They got bought and realize there's nothing you can do with it, and, but we, we lose nothing by taking it back.
Do we have to pay for deed change and all that stuff?
Sure, yeah, we definitely do.
If he wants it.
Wouldn't be much. Doesn't have to be much.
How much, Eileen?
I don't know, but you'd be surprised.
About three hundred bucks, probably.
Illegal costs and everything?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a big deal.
It's a flat, it's a flat number for that kind of paper.
Yep, not too much.
All right, let's get it going.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
I make a motion to take it back.
Motion, well, I feel the same way as you.
To accept the donation.
To accept the donation.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Tom, motion made by Dan Drea.
Do we have any concern that the, that the person who put this on the agenda is not present tonight?
I don't, I don't, what, what difference does it make? He's offering to donate the land, he's offering to donate the land to us. It's got virtually zero value.
I understand this.
Well, so if he didn't want to show up, he didn't care what the results were.
But somebody puts an agenda on the item, I, to me, I...
That's you.
Yeah, it's me. It's always me.
I think too much money's been spent on this subject already, for such as...
Do you know how much time we would spend talking to him if you were here?
Yeah, yeah, you'd be, Finley would be asking a whole bunch of questions, like, how did you buy it?
Who possessed you?
Okay, we have a motion, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Am I the only one against, apparently? Geez, I guess I'm in a bad mood today.
Who's against, do you have a question?
I'll go along with, I'll change to yes.
Go ahead.
It's a majority. I'll go with the majority. I really, I honestly feel I don't care either way.
I'd be lucky.
Oh, you're the one who made the motion. Okay, I'm going to go with it, yes. Seven zero zero.
I would have been with you, I just...
We still would have lost Bill, so...
Correct, I agree with what, I agree with what Council Dwyer is saying.
Six of one dozen, I suppose. Okay. Now, next, uh, minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand and six.
Madam Chair, move approval of the Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, town council meeting minutes, following modifications.
Go for it.
Page two, line thirty-five. It reads, "When asked to expand upon safeguards that have been put in, in place," um, it wasn't Council Dwyer that was asking that, it was actually me. So it should, so it should be Council Boyd asks to expand upon safeguards that are put into place, period.
Yep.
And then that'll be acceptable.
Yep.
And one other change that I have on page sixteen, line thirty, I believe it's Counselor Flood, not Counselor Flo.
Unless he's changed your name.
Harkening back to being Counselor Boddy from Counselor Boyd. That's all I had.
Okay.
And I have one funny one.
Oh, okay.
Jackie, go ahead.
I thought Flo was pretty funny, but okay.
Page fifteen, line forty, uh, Counselor Nahad is alluding to his almost of a bygone error.
You need to have your microphone on.
He, it says a bygone error, and it means era.
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 So, change error to era.
As a New Englandese, you missed it because you speak New England.
Are you sure that isn't what I meant?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, it was a New England era.
I ha, I live with somebody who talks like that, so...
Any other?
Hey, I'm from South Jersey, I don't talk like a New Englander.
You picked, you picked it up. Okay, I have a motion, Bill Boyd, I need a second.
Second.
Motion is except the minutes with corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, seven zero zero zero. Comments from the press, sing none. Comments from the public, you've been patiently waiting there. Just, just make sure that you push the button so it's bright green and just state your name, please.
It is bright green, I think.
Okay.
No, it's not.
No.
Oh.
It becomes even brighter.
Now I see it bright green. Uh, besides being Profile Estates, I'm here to voice my opposition regarding the money...
Could you please, could you say your name, please?
Oh, Larry Demers, Woodbine Lane.
Thank you.
And I'm here to voice my opposition regarding that state money for sidewalks. Uh, it seems to me that sidewalks do real well when you have a storefront community. We are not a storefront community. We don't have people walking in sidewalks. There's sidewalks in town that don't get used. For example, up by the Bowlin Alley next to the, the, uh, hospital, there's a couple hundred feet of sidewalk, doesn't get used. It's never going to get connected to in our lifetime, or anybody else's. There's just so much of that. Corner of Madeline Bennett and Babousek Lake Road, there's, well, besides the fact, I think there's eleven traffic signals, um, but in Merrimack we can afford all that. There's probably seventy-five feet in two locations of sidewalks that are never going to get connected, never going to connect to anything. Now, besides that, you've got to plow them. You've got a pickup truck, a gentleman with a, I don't know, eighty thousand dollar plow, taking care of those pieces of sidewalk, you know, besides the ones on the lake road and, and whatever. It is a total waste of money when there's bridges falling down. I just don't think we should accept it. It's, it's, it's a waste, especially since, unless they want to send us the money to maintain it in a brand-new sidewalk plot. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Demers.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
I can wait till the end, I just wanted to speak to what those sidewalks were.
Okay, and Tim, and why don't you say your statement, then you can respond.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be...
Hi, Tim Tenha, Seventy-two Amherst Road. I, I come to you as a resident, uh, but I wanted to bring up something since you're in budget season, and I know, uh, it's probably too late for this budget season, and there's, I have no expectation for this budget season. But, uh, tonight, uh, we did get a, an update from the Conservation Commission. We spoke about the land that we have and things like that. I would like to encourage you to be, uh, looking, uh, at, at, since, at the budget as well as encouraging members of your staff, uh, to be looking closer at what we've been doing at the Conservation Commission. And I have not discussed this with my peers, that's why I'm here as a resident. But we have lots of usage going on out there. Uh, last year we had, uh, inappropriate usage of Greater Woods going on, so we funded out of our Fund Fifty-three, extra police patrols, ATV patrols and things like that, uh, in order to try and curb some of the bad usage. In my mind, those funds should not have come out of the Conservation Fund, they should be rolled into the police department's everyday activities. Those properties are utilized quite a bit. Uh, the police, I believe, are, they understand our road structure and all that needs to happen. I don't believe that, uh, the majority of the members understand our trail structures and everything else that's going on. You compound that with police, fire and emergency, I'm really concerned if there was ever an issue out there, they, they don't have a complete awareness of what we've been putting together. What the commission's been putting together is based on money that goes back to the nineties when the town, as a town, uh, when we were in that previous form of government, voted to put together for the purposes of creating this open space and creating it to be accessible. Now I think it's time for the town to be thinking about what the implication of creating all this open space is and what we should be doing with our, our fire, emergency and police departments, so. Um, I, the reason why I brought up the comment about budget here is, is that it'll have a budget impact. I don't think it's a tremendous impact, but we should be thinking about, um, whatever training we should be doing for, for trail rescues and as well as trail familiarization. It would be great if I knew that the, that the members of the emergency, or at least the senior members, knew how to navigate and get around these trails in case something happened. Uh, fire, you know, if we had a forest fire out there, we went through a tremendous drought over the last couple of years, we've been very fortunate that we didn't have a fire. We did have a fire in Wildcat Falls about seven years ago, and we lost nearly seven acres before the fire department was able to bring it under control, mostly because of access. Uh, so, so what I wanted to do is, is I, is I, again, I realize it's past the point this time, but, um, but as you've challenged us, and we've mentioned that we're thinking about manuf, uh, how we're going to maintain all the properties we have, I think there's also some of that, that needs to fall back to the town. Uh, and, and, and I know that the chiefs are, are, understand what I'm talking about. I know when we brought it up before, when we, when we privately, I shouldn't say privately, when we separately funded the police department, it was because they've been thinking about it, but they just haven't had the means to do it. I think we need to just realize that, uh, police, fire and emergency need to have a presence in those properties, like they have a presence in our parks and things like that, so. And I think if people saw more of those folks out there, they would even feel more comfortable and be more willing to go out there. People would be out there on their own and not be worried. I mean, we, we live in a world that's interesting and dangerous at times, but if they knew that there was regular, ongoing police patrols that could happen at any time, I think that would go a long way to quality of life for the residents of this town, so. So, I don't think it's a huge item, I don't think it's a huge thing. Uh, you have experts in your chiefs, in their staff, they, I'm sure, can figure out the right way to do this, speak to their peers and all that, but I just wanted to encourage you to, um, as you start thinking about the next fiscal year and what you want to present, um, that we should be thinking bigger picture, so, that's all I have to say.
I don't know, did you say your name at the beginning of your...
Yes.
You did, okay, I just want to make sure that the stenographer had it. I think your point's very valid, I, especially related to the police and fire, having knowledge of the trails, more than, you know, access is one thing, but having a certain amount of population who are knowledgeable about how to get to wherever a victim might be as, as well, if stated.
Bill?
I appreciate what you're, what you're saying, Tim, but I believe it was last year that the fire department had an allocation for, for a vehicle to go into the woods, or may have been two years ago, where they included in their budget a vehicle to go into the woods, so I would say, you're looking at me as...
They have a forestry vehicle.
Forestry vehicle.
Well, so does the fire.
Fire department has a forestry...
And the fire department, so I, I, I think that there's a general understanding by the police department and by the, and with the fire department, how to be able to get in and get out and navigate it. So, I'm not sure...
It's probably worth the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and maybe they're much more aware than I, than I, I'm aware of. I, I can tell you our mapping project we're doing with the NRPC is we're actually going to have, uh, GPS downloadable stuff to your handheld devices, GPX file formats, so, so, uh, so they can use their GPS just like they'd be on a road, it'll be like they're on a trail, it'll look the same, look and feel.
But that's the stuff they need to know about and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, right, so.
Good point, Jackie.
Yeah, I do have a comment about that. Um, the, uh, the police and fire take care of the town, they're town, um, uh, service people, and, um, the parks and the conservation land, they don't differentiate between your property and, you know, Barbara Watson's property, and I, they shouldn't differentiate between conservation land and parkland and whatnot. And the other thing that I think is that they're trained, they're trained to deal with, um, like dangerous situations like you guys dealt with, and probably shouldn't have with the, um, target shooting. It turned out to be a little more dangerous than I think any of us realized at the time, and they're trained to do that sort of thing.
Right, I, I, I don't think there has to be additional funding in the budget. Our fire department goes and they, they map out buildings of businesses in town regularly, uh, and those are the type of things that should in fact be incorporated, so, uh, you know, I'm sure Eileen can have the conversation to make sure they realize the importance in during rush hour in the evening, late afternoon, they're not going to be four-wheeling in Greater Woods to look for these things, but on other parts of the day, they could easily do it, in my estimation, without further manpower. You shouldn't have to spend the money on that, in my opinion, either. I agree with you, it just didn't seem appropriate. But, uh, but if they know of issues, we always tell people, when they have a complaint, we say, "Did you call the police department?" And, and they have those abilities...
It's like the parks.
Right, they have those abilities to get around in Greater Woods. Um, and that's it, I guess. I had one other thing, pulled a metal block.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Mr. Demers. That's what it was, Mr. Demers, I just...
Mr. Demers, uh, Mr. Rothaus would like to respond to your comment.
I just, um, not so much your comment, just I wanted you to be aware where these sidewalks were, because I agree, we do have some sidewalks that, the Bowlin Alley's a great point. It's going to be decades before anything happens.
Which has been the debate on this council for a long time.
But, and those sidewalks are built by the contractor, which is why those, if they're not going to be connected for years and years, I, I agree that I don't think it's necessarily appropriate that we make them do it, but, but that's how it is right now by the town code. Um, the, the sidewalks that this funded, this grant it's covering is for McKell, um, well, that's, that's a heavily used road in the afternoon by the students that come out of there, and it's actually a dangerous road, which is why, I, I understand and I agree with you in many instances, but for that road, I think it's very, very important that it get accommodated, because it is a dangerous situation in the afternoons in particular, but...
On Woodbury, the sidewalks are on Route Three, not on Woodbury, right?
It's all part of it, 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 Woodbury is part of that, um, that grant.
Yep, Woodbury, that's the one next to Buckwoods.
Correct.
So there's going to be a sidewalk going up the hill?
Down the hill, right.
Okay, which, oh.
Yeah, down the hill.
[laughing].
I, I kind of disagree with the, well...
No, that's fair.
If the kids and the adults in this town are taught what side of the street to walk on...
Sure.
All the time.
Which evidently not, because they're always on the wrong side. Um, then there shouldn't be a problem on that road.
You should, you should talk in that, because no one's going to be able to hear you.
I tend to agree with part of Route Three. Um, which is by Pinebergs on the bridge, I think that's part of it also, right?
Yep, it is.
Um, although the road should be widened, the sidewalks aren't going to do any good.
Well, that's a whole other issue, yeah.
So, you know, I know there's probably a lot of work needed to get the grant and probably a lot of screaming and fighting and whatever, but, uh, you know...
Just to let you know, this has been a discussion, sidewalks, has been a discussion multiple time on the council.
Oh.
And, you know, there's, there's been different opinions from different committees in the council, and I would, I would back you up, Finley, that that, and in many cases, it's like a bridge to nowhere. It's a sidewalk that has no, it has a beginning and end, you can see it. But this one really was related to the, the kids, the safety of the kids walking, and that's why it was an exception to us, because it had value, and we knew it was going to be used, and it wasn't going to be a beginning and end, never to be used. So just the exception.
I don't know where they walk to when they come down Woodbury, because this...
But they do.
Frank, I think you're right.
Yeah, Frank, they do a lot, you're right.
I mean, if you wanted to put something out on, um, what street is it where the South Fire Station is, I mean, there's probably a lot of people that walk over there.
That's right, that's a much more...
And of course you've got guys doing buildings, and you make them put in the sidewalk to nowhere, like the hospital up there, tell them to take the money out of their contract and donate it to the Parks and Rec. I'm not, I'm not here to save anybody any money.
I understand.
Just a stupid idea about putting a sidewalk, and the planning board was going to make a guy put a sidewalk in in front of Custom Electric so the kid could have two parking places to sell motorcycles. so the kid could have two parking places to sell motorcycles. I mean, it's ridiculous that the sidewalk law, or rule, or code, whatever it is, should be, and taking once, one item at a time, one, one piece of property at a time.
What I would recommend, that you say these words in front of the planning board.
Pardon?
You should say these words in front of the planning board. You have, I mean, it's really the same.
Who, who writes the law, the code?
It's part of the site review process.
Yeah, yeah, but who, who says that there's going to be a sidewalk when somebody's?
Planning board.
So, that we voted?
By town code, though, it's, it's, it's in our rules.
Town council?
So, that hasn't, the council can do it, the city.
Who can change it?
The planning board.
No, but yeah, but the code, town code, it can be changed by us, it.
Can be approved, it has to be approved by us. It's recommended by them.
Yeah.
And we either approve it or not approve it.
Yeah.
Which is where it started, I believe.
Yeah. Could I just point out that, that even today, in, in most cases, actually, if you read the minutes of the planning board, most new developments donate, they set aside money that they, that would have been spent on the so-called required sidewalks in, in order to fund another project, maybe nearby, a public benefit. Exactly, exactly, and I, I didn't realize that there was a sidewalk to nowhere up there, because now that would have been perfect if they had.
There's all kinds of sidewalks to nowhere.
Something else, yeah.
On Route Three, I mean, you know, across from, just up the street from Custom Electric, there's a hundred and fifty-foot sidewalk from nowhere.
Well.
They're all over.
I have to say that there are the, some people, including myself, who feel that if we put sidewalks in the middle of town, like from Abbey Griffin Park down to Rivets and Merrimack Flower Shop and in there, and there's already a sidewalk on Railroad Ave, that, that people will use it, walk and, and have access, better access to businesses, and there are some people who do walk in every day, and like Madeline Bennett, and that area there, that is heavily used, even on weekends with the dog walkers and all.
But, but there's seventy-five feet of sidewalk behind each signal light.
For the children, yep, for the children to, well.
No, you've got twenty-one school buses, okay? And, and the sidewalk, I mean, I know the sidewalk going over to Woodland Park, okay? But now you're doing school buses, but when you want to put in the sidewalk, it said for the kids who'd be walking to school. Well, they don't, they take a school bus. They take a school bus.
I know, and I, I guess I have, have.
Nobody walks over there.
Okay, well, I think, I think you, you got the point, though, that I think there's.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Demers. Yes, Dan.
I want to be on record as being an ally, Mr. Demers.
He's your ally.
I am your ally. I have many times quoted the hundred and fifty to two-hundred thousand dollar snow machine, that we don't shovel our sidewalks, and, and to have a New England town with seven months, possibly, or six months of, of snow, and it's dangerous, it's dangerous to walk out with ice and, it's a, people don't walk anymore, they don't.
They do.
This is in Santa Barbara.
This is exactly the conversation we've had in the past.
Yes, you have had many, you, you have other people who will think like you, too, so you're not alone. That's all I wanted to say.
Hey, Dan, why don't you make an agenda item on it, if you want to.
I'm all set, thank you, sir.
You know, every business in town has a parking lot, so to disagree with you about walking to businesses, everybody's got a side, got a parking lot.
Okay, we can, we can talk about this forever.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. You're going to pull, what's that?
We still have our.
Okay. We've had, there's no comments?
Listen, listen.
Comments from the council, except for you. Yes, Finley.
I just want to take a second to wish my father a happy eighty-third birthday.
God bless him. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn.
There you go, Dan Dryer, motion to adjourn, second.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill Boyd.
Does he want to say?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero zero, and happy new year, everybody. Except for me.
Elaine, aye.